I think we've been having a conversation on the cost of healthcare in New York State.
Not loudly.
Oh, I guess I would disagree. I am not our healthcare guy. We'd love to come down and talk with you. And we've been talking about it for 20 years. And setting aside the effect of ACA, New York State had a 20-year-plus track record of making healthcare, particularly employer-provided healthcare extraordinarily expensive. So if you, if we can reengage on that, we would love to.
Well, I think that's-
And in addition to the direct costs through coverage mandates, I think our, I think combined HECCR taxes are something in the neighborhood of $5 billion a year, maybe a little bit more than that.
But it's fair to say that those costs are having an effect on the ability to raise compensation for employees.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna vary dramatically based on the nature of your business and the nature of your profit margins. Some will be, some can absorb those costs far better than others.
Okay. And there's just one other point I want to make, because I know that, you know, during the course of this debate, there's going to be a lot of statistics thrown around by everybody. Those who are in favor of it are going to say, "We raised wages in Seattle and not a single person lost their job." And there'll be those who'll say, again, "The sky will fall." You made a reference to the number of manufacturing jobs that we've lost in the state since 1990, and particularly in New York City since the early 90s. But you can't look at it purely through the lens of wages. You have, you cannot deny that the effect, particularly in New York City, and I know Senator Perkins, he represents part of the city that's more affected than others, I think, there are, there was the effect of the gentrification of communities that used to be manufacturing neighborhoods. You cannot look at the garment industry and not see the effect of gentrification and housing having been built in those areas pushing the garment industry out of the west side of Manhattan. The meatpacking district also. The last meatpacker has packed his knives and left, you know, the west side of Manhattan. And it had nothing to do with the cost of wages. It had everything to do with the cost of real estate and the value to, you know, our affordable housing developers and our luxury and market rate developments. So that, making those communities far more popular for residential and the rezoning and the gentrification has really affected our manufacturing industry, especially in the city of New York. Wages was a smaller part of it than anything else.
Absolutely. And you could check the tape. When I was talking about that, I didn't, I didn't raise wages as a factor.
But you alluded to it.
I didn't. What I said was, these are the types of jobs that we're talking about here. We want good-paying jobs. One of the, and we did a, we did a study, it's a little out of date, but from 2010 to 20, I'm sorry, from 2000 to 2010, virtually all job growth in New York State were in sectors that paid below average wages: financial service, professional services, construction and manufacturing, generally high-paying wages, job loss in every sector. That's not true in the U.S., that's not true among states we compete with. My point was, let's look at why New York State is not generating good-paying jobs, rather than saying, "Take the jobs in industries that, whose profit margins don't really allow for higher wages," and just mandate their wages go up, thinking that's a sustainable economic development plan. That was my point when I was talking about the loss of manufacturing jobs. There's no doubt New York State adopted policies: energy, workers' comp, and property taxes certainly. I think in New York City, by far the biggest effect is the, I think someone, is the cost of, cost of land, cost of rent was the major death knell for manufacturing there. But all these other fact, these other factors which were driven by New York State policy is one of the reasons why New York State has lost manufacturing jobs double the national average. We should look at those too.
We should.
Because those are the jobs we want.
We should also be looking at federal policies that have incentivized the transfer of manufacturing jobs to, it's not even third world countries anymore. I'm not even sure what they, what they categorize them as.
Outside here.
Yeah.
Outside here.
Right. So, thank you, Ken.
My pleasure.
Senator Perkins?
So, I, I'm, you, $15 an hour, that's not a lot of money, is it?
To some it is, obviously. Obviously, it is to some-
To some it's just a, it's at best a, you know, a wage, a decent, you know, opportunity to make a living, right?
Absolutely.
So, now, it's kind of hard. That's about $600 a, a what, a week, a month? 40-hour week?
At, at, 40 hours a week, 52 hours, 52 weeks a year, it's $30,000.
That's, that's, that's kind of, that's not much, is it?
You're trying to-
No. So, what do we do? How do we fix that?
Well, I think you're, I think there's a, I think there's a false choice being presented here. What I, what I've heard is, for example, fast food, wages are going up, so people in other low, the only, the only alternative for workers in other low-wage industries is to move from one low-wage industry to another. I think that's, that's got to be the false choice. It can't be the plan for New York State's, you know, economic future that we merely artificially increase the cost of businesses whose margins don't support. They're not going to be $60,000 a year jobs ever. I think we need to look at what is, what is preventing individuals from moving from entry-level jobs to better jobs. Is one, the lack of jobs, the lack of accessibility, things like lack of affordable childcare, et cetera. I get it. An immediate fix would be mandate these jobs pay more. I don't think that's a long-term fix, because you're, you're not, you got to take it in the overall context. The other thing I'll mention, and the other thing I'll mention, though, E.J. McMahon's conversation talked about EITC. We generally agree. We think it's, it's a very effective tool. It's a very efficient tool by definition. It only benefits low-income households, unlike the minimum wage. We, the Business Council, my organization, support it. It was a strong supporter of the initial New York State component to the federal EITC. We haven't taken a position lately, it's not been on the table. But we agree there are other things to be done that support working families, particularly working, low-income families whose wage, total wages may be affected by many factors. You could raise the, the minimum wage, the hourly wage, to $30 an hour, and if there's not hours to be had or positions to be had, it's not going to produce the total family income growth that you're looking for.
So, if, if it was $15, what would, what would, what would the business community need to make that happen?
Some will be able to absorb it and some won't.
But those that won't, those that won't, what would they need?
How would you know that?
Nothing that you can provide. I think that's my answer.
No, you're absolutely right about that.
Yeah. But that's my point, that-
But my point is that, I just, is, is $15 an hour is not a lot of money, is it?
If I'm a, here's the point, though. If I'm a small business, if my costs go up, I've got really a couple choices. I can reduce my expenses, I can increase my prices, I can reduce my own personal profits, I can, I can invest less in my business. I don't know what else, what other choices you have. So, I don't, you can, if you can influence one of those four factors, that's what you do.
Which one would you prefer us to be, that we influence?
The one I've talked about, the one that the-
Not the wage, though.
I mean, as a practical matter, the only one that the legislature can affect are the state-imposed costs of doing business.
Okay. So, help us understand where those costs might be that we could affect, other than the wage.
Well, I, I've already covered a couple. You can look at, you can look at what drives real property taxes. You can look at what drives workers' compensation costs. You can look at what drives energy costs for commercial customers in New York State, still among the highest in the nation. You can go down line. How do we structure UI tax tables?
So, get us a proposal.
What's that?
Get us a proposal, so it's affordable.
I'll give you a proposal. I'll give you a proposal to make New York State more economically competitive.
Is that going to include $15 an hour, or, or a living wage?
I, if I could, I could, I could save $15 billion a year. You can repeal property taxes for business. As a practical matter, no. I can't give you a dollar-for-dollar offset. But I can certainly give you what I think are very practical and doable cost of doing business reductions that I'll encourage you to consider.
All right. Settle and see it.
I appreciate that. You know, I had a, I had a group that prepared a report on this issue. And they said that, you know, they're not, they're not against a minimum wage increase as long as the state was willing to give a dollar-for-dollar credit to the employer for the increase in minimum wage above its current wage. And so, it's fair enough to say that we don't have $15.6 billion to give that kind of credit to employers out there. And to the extent that you have any programs that are available or that you want to advance that we can consider, I'm sure Senator Perkins and I would be happy to review it. Thank you.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to go out of order for a moment or two, and call Mike Durant from the New York State, excuse me, the National Federation of Independent Businesses. He's the state director. Michael, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Senator Martins and Senator Perkins, how are you? I'm going to do my best. I'm not going to go verbatim. I think that probably some of the questions you asked, Mr. Focalski and some others, you might have similar for me. I think that what I want to do is, you're right, this issue brings about an awful lot of emotion, emotion from the advocates for increasing the minimum wage. I think unfortunately, the rhetoric has been amped up to the point where even on Monday, the governor pointing fingers at business, and business is starting to feel resentful in a state that has been described as being somewhat anti-business and has earned its anti-business reputation. So what I want to do is do my job, which is be less of a lobbyist and more of an advocate for whom I represent, which is 11,000 small and independent businesses across the state of New York, mom-and-pop businesses. Businesses, the typical NFIB member has five to seven employees, nets anywhere between $400 and $650,000 a year. So this is where you get your car washed, your pizza on a Friday night. This is where you get your oil changed, small independent retail. This is what drives the state's economy. A question was asked earlier about how many small businesses are in the state of New York. That depends on what you define as small business. In doing a quick search, the Small Business Association, federal entity, says there's 2 million, and I believe the governor on Monday used, or on Tuesday, when he was nice to business, used that, that there are 2 million small businesses in New York. They employ 99% of New Yorkers. I mean, this is, or 99% of the private sector businesses in New York are small businesses. One in five New Yorkers is employed in a business that has 20 or few employees. So to think that arbitrarily mandating an increase in wages is going to have little to no effect on jobs and on business is short-sighted when looking at this issue. So, we have spent time talking to our members and getting their stories. It's hard not to be passionate when you represent small business, because these folks invested what they had. They're pursuing their own piece of the American dream. They're taking a risk. They're doing their best to own and operate a business in New York and take care of the employees that they can afford. Because without their employees, they don't have a business. Individuals like Joel, who owns a small lumber mill in Castle Creek, which is a community outside of Binghamton. It's a fourth-generation business. It's been operating since 1926, has just a handful of employees. When you factor the competitive nature of their business, the commodity that they're, that they sell, the product, the lower cost of doing business generally across the border in Pennsylvania, running their numbers, their business would survive two years at best and would probably be closed as this was phased in by the time it hit $12 an hour. They wouldn't be able to afford the employees they have. They, the business owner themselves wouldn't be making a profit. The business would close. We have Stephanie, who owns an antique retail store in Whitehall, not far from here today. She operates her business on already very fine profit margin. She competes with big-box stores. She competes with bigger, with chain stores. She specifically referenced in talking to me that she is not, in fact, a small business. She is a mom-and-pop business, and that is a badge which many of our members wear with enormous amount of pride. If the minimum wage ultimately reached $15 an hour, she's going to be forced to cut her part-time employees just to keep the business open. Without the part-time employees, she won't be able to grow her business. She won't be able to expand. She won't be able to hire more people. She won't be able to provide any more additional benefits or compensation for her employees. And that's a difficult decision that she doesn't want to face. But that, again, is a story that's typical for the folks that I represent and small business generally. You have Byron, who owns an independent market in Skylerville, which in order to compete with larger stores, operates on a significantly fine margin. He emailed me and described that it's not just this issue, as Senator Perkins, you're alluding, it's rising costs in workers' comp, it's rising costs in healthcare. This minimum wage increase, as phased in, eventually will tip them over the side of the cliff because of the costs are not being reduced anywhere else. I have stories like this all over the place. I even have more in my testimony. But I think that you're seeing the theme that I'm trying to present, and, and this is regional. I have a manufacturer in my testimony from, from Freeport. I have a small cottage resort, so a tourist business owner in Chautauqua, Crowning. These, this is what's going to happen. See, as, as we point fingers at McDonald's and as we do these things, the people inevitably that are going to be impacted by this are the people that I represent, the independent business. Those are the ones in the middle. Those are the ones that don't receive the significant state subsidies and investment. They do not receive positive, substantial positive tax reform, like we've seen other aspects of our economy. And when we put in place public policy, minimum wage, paid leave is probably going to be something we're going to talk about, when you start adding these things up, the small business owners are the ones that get squeezed in the middle. So, the problem with Albany and the problem with public policy generally, not the two of you, is that business gets too often painted with a broad brush. I said not the two of you, are you? It's a business gets painted with a broad brush. There's a fiscal and economic reality that's very different between big business and Wall Street and Main Street. And I think when we examine this issue, and frankly, when we examine public policy issues moving forward, we need to be mindful of that. The State Farm Bureau has done a tremendous analysis of this proposal, has concluded that our family farms are looking at $500 million in additional labor costs alone. When you hear an argument that this won't increase costs, or that this $5.7 billion is automatically going to be a stimulus package, and folks are going to take this money and they're going to spend, well, you have to question the purchasing power. Costs will go up. Family milk will go up. Produce will go up. How much is affordable for New Yorkers? How much is affordable for folks to buy milk, to buy produce? When you talk about the nonprofit community, which has been brought up today, their concern, does the state have the fiscal resources to reimburse if New York moves up towards $15? School districts have estimated the average cost for this is approximately $283,000 per school. Municipalities, even those that have arbitrarily increased their, their minimum wages, acknowledge there's a cost associated with this. So there is, in fact, a taxpayer impact. This is why we're part of the coalition that was mentioned before, the Minimum Wage Reality Check, is to ask not only rhetorical questions but show that there are emotional stories on the other side. So about, maybe to preemptively answer some questions that the two of you may have, phasing in this increase is going to have a predictable result. Every business that I represent is going to have a drop-dead date when escalating labor costs, absent significant and probably fiscally unfeasible measures on the opposite side is going to push them over. It doesn't matter how long you phase it in. If you're a small business in upstate New York with a finite consumer market base, and labor costs are increasing, and we already have high workers' comp, healthcare, energy, et cetera, costs, even increasing those, you're not, we're losing population every year in upstate New York. You're not going to gain more consumers. Plus, the competitive nature of the economy, with, who these businesses are competing with, phasing it in isn't really going to have an impact. The tax cut, we've been outspoken this week about this, idea that you can pair a minimum wage with a tax cut. You have to be realistic for a second, outside of the pure numbers. Tax cuts are not specific, not necessarily permanent. They're always subject to repeal. I don't think any entity has ever rolled back a minimum wage increase or a current level of minimum wage because the economy went into a negative, severe negative direction. That's just first. Second, as, as both Ken Focalski and E.J. McMahon have talked about, labor costs, you're talking about business gross expenses. Tax cuts you're talking about on operating margins. So we don't think this is an equitable trade. Lastly, with this, I understand that this issue is complicated from both a political and a public policy perspective. Nobody wants to see folks not being able to provide what's necessary for them and their family. But I do think in a larger context, we need to have a skills gap that's growing in the state. We have plenty of small businesses that cannot hire and find the qualified workers that they need. We need to invest more in workforce development. We need to examine and be mindful, public policy-wise, the differences between big business and small business and what small business needs. We don't want to see, you know, and we already are seeing iPads and kiosks. Those are jobs at one point that have been there. So, what I'm going to say is, our position is going to be no. Our position is a rigid no. Our position is a no paired with a tax cut. Our position is no regardless of how long it's phased in. Our position will be no if you put a training wage in place. Small businesses in this state are struggling. I'm going to be no for our members. I'm going to be no for the, the members that I represented, the ones that have stacks of phone call messages, transcripts, emails, et cetera, on my desk. I just think you need to be mindful of the small business and what it means for New York, what it means in your specific district, and what it means for economic present and future.
Michael, thanks very much for the testimony. I will tell you that in this discussion, we have to be fair. And being fair means looking at all sides. And I appreciate your testimony and bringing that other side here, because, you know, $15 is a lot of money. It is, in certain parts of the state. And, you know, when I talk to my small businesses in my communities, they tell me that $15 is a lot of money. Now, will it impact me personally? No. No. The business that I have, we pay our employees significantly more than that because it's a whole different model. But I know the impact that it's going to have on small businesses. So we have to be fair across the board, and we can assume. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate it because we have to consider all sides here and not just one to the exclusion of the other. And I know Senator Perkins has a question.
So, Mr. Chair, you, you don't mean to say that $15 an hour is a lot of money for a working person? Do you?
Senator Perkins, I-
I'm just asking that in, in the abstract. Now, I don't want to necessarily put it in the context of-
You asked me a question.
Let me finish, though, because I want you to-
But you asked me a question.
I want to put it in the, you know, I let you go on and on when you're making your representations, so I tried to be brief.
I didn't ask you a question, you're asking me.
But I'm just saying, I won't want to put it in the context of his needs. I'm saying for a working person, do you think $15 is luxury living? Do you think that's a working person's? Forget the, the other possible constraints, just $15 an hour. So, the person, is that a lot of money for a working person?
Are you done?
Sure.
I just, I don't want to interrupt you again, Bill.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. Listen, $15 is not, is absolutely not a lot of money, in my mind, for a working person.
Thank you.
Absolutely, positively not. But, but, no, no. And now I'm going to finish my answer. And we're not going to have this debate between ourselves, because we're here to listen to witnesses. And you and I are going to have this discussion afterwards.
I meant to ask him as well, because I just want to be clear.
Let me finish, and I'll be clear.
But you editorialize also-
No, no, no. Bill, you're going to let me, Bill, you're going to let me finish. I said absolutely not. But I know, I absolutely know, that when I first started working, I made less than $15 an hour. I started at minimum wage, and I then, and I, and I know countless people who did as well. So let's not, let's not-
Is the minimum wage the same now?
No, but it certainly was minimum wage, whatever it was at the time, Bill. So, let's, let's not, but let's not have, let's not have that discussion at this point. We know that entry-level jobs are entry-level jobs. We know that we want to train and we need to train people in order to be able to do better, higher-educated, higher-skilled jobs. And we're not, as a state, providing them with those opportunities. Those are the challenges that we have. We're going to work together, you and I. We are, in making sure that this happens. But it's not just about a $15 minimum wage. It's got to be a much broader discussion than what we're having, you know, in, in this exchange right now. So, Michael, I apologize for the, the dialogue here. But I have no further questions unless Senator has any questions for you.
Thank you.
We're all good?
We're all good.
All right. Enjoy the rest of the afternoon. You as well? Dr. Barrington. Dr. Barrington is the executive director for the Institute for Compensation Studies at the ILR School at Cornell University. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you. And I will not be insulted if any of you stand up and stretch a minute, because I know we've all been here for-
We've been stretching all day.
And if it's okay with you, I know the time is passing. So, rather than going through my prepared comments, which you have, I just wanted to make a quick half dozen points of things that I thought either were not brought up or not sufficiently addressed. Or would you rather have me go through comments? Okay. I'll do that, and then I'll answer.
Dr. Barrington, however you would like to proceed.
Any questions you want to.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I guess the first thing that I would like to highlight is that, just reinforce what we do all know, which is this is absolutely historic in scope in terms of the, the size of the increase we're talking about. The point that's not been made that I think is really important in the context of the economic evidence that people have been talking about this study or that study and where economists sit. So I am an economist by training, so I will speak for my class. I think the reason that you see so many economists not coming out in favor of 15 is the same reason they're also not coming out opposed to it. There's just a lot of, people are more agnostic because we don't have the research. So we really are pioneering into uncharted territory. And that's not to necessarily say for or against. It's to say, we need to be, think very carefully about how we do study the impacts and how we plan for that, so that when we need to do, or if we need to do course corrections as we go into this uncharted territory, we're doing it in an evidence-based way. Because if and when and how the $15 minimum wage goes forward in New York, we have an opportunity not just to be a leader on that, but to be a leader on evidence-based policymaking. And so as we look at the municipalities that have been trying to study this, LA built a study into theirs, you know, a lot of the cities have, but those are city studies. And so we really don't have a study on a statewide basis that looks at something of this magnitude. A couple other points. I would also be cautious on interpreting any international comparisons on the, this level and where it fits in the world, because there's just such a long list of other things that make labor markets not comparable in terms of the labor market regulations, universal healthcare, differences in taxes. So I think it's more relevant to think about where we sit vis-à-vis other states than where we sit internationally if we go to a $15 minimum wage. One thing economists agree on is that we rarely agree on anything. The one exception to that, I would say, is the earned income tax credit. You have heard this brought up over and over, and I, you know, it is just the thing that you really get almost unanimous agreement, that this is the most effective, most efficient anti-poverty program there is. And to hear the business community's support for it as well, in terms of how it targets who you want to target in a way that, that business doesn't have to share in that, that administrative burden as well, is something that we just, you know, really need to fold into this conversation. Not just in terms of whether there's threshold adjustments that need to be made, but are there bigger, is there a bigger opportunity here to, to really use that program to target the anti-poverty objectives we may have while we deal with whatever objectives the $15 minimum wage is bringing us. Another comment from the sort of business operations perspective is the importance of predictability. So, thinking about the indexing question as part of this conversation, and, and trying to get better response from the business community on how they feel about indexing, because it, it makes things very predictable. And one of the things that's difficult, especially as a small businessperson, would be the unpredictability of knowing when you're going to get a huge jump like this. So, folding into the conversation of if and when and how the minimum wage is raised, how do we then consider making it a less unpredictable business of when those costs go up? Several people have mentioned the, the issue of wage compression, that you have, that this isn't just about those who are currently at or below the $15 per hour, but what about those who are just above it? And so there, there is some evidence that that compression effect is real. Some economists have said up to 150% of the minimum wage. So, if you increase the minimum wage by $10, you'll see ripple effects up to 15. If you raise it at 15, you're going to have significant ripple effects up to 22. That's a, that is a reality or an experience we've had in the past with smaller increases. Dealing with that kind of wage compression, though, is, is not, is not a new issue for employers. Employers are constantly dealing with, if I raise this worker's wage, how do I deal with this worker's? So I, I think the compression challenges, while they're real from a budgetary standpoint, that, that issue of how do you deal with the dynamics of your workforce is something that- that, that issue of how do you deal with the dynamics of your workforce is something that folks are used to dealing with in, because it happens all the time for different reasons. The one final point that I would make and then, you know, we can answer any questions or, or talk about whatever you want to talk about, either what's in the, the prepared comments or other, is the macroeconomic environment that we're in. And so no one's, no one's really talked about whether this is a good or bad economic time to be doing this. And I would say that, that first, New York State, as well as, you know, the U.S., has a very resilient economy. We have absorbed increases and changes in, in labor law multiple times and with big changes. And so we are a resilient, adaptable economy. If it were five years ago, I would think this would be a non-starter as a time to be having this conversation. Given we are at a point right now of very low inflation, low energy costs, unemployment is continuing to fall, we're rebounding in employment. From the larger macroeconomic situation, this is not a bad time to be having the conversation. And it's a much better time than five years ago. So just thinking a little bit about the resiliency of the economy overall and the larger macroeconomic time that we're in right now, I think is also something we just want to be considering as we think about whether this is something we push for at this time or not. So, are there other questions or comments?